Good evening. We would like to call the 2nd page of 19th. To the school board's meeting to order. Madam Clerk? The board members will presently respond, Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Ms. Gibson. Here. Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cosby.
Here.
Ms. Owen. Here. Ms. Sapien.
Here.
Ms. Page. Here. You have a chair. I'm sorry, you have a phone, Madam Chair. And Ms. Burke is on the line. She is requesting to participate. Do you have a phone, Ms. Page? Board members? Do we need a motion? Ms. Burke? The first, Ms. Burke needs to state. Board members, Ms. Burke needs to state where she is and why she is at the location. Ms. Burke? Can you hear me? Ms. Burke, can you hear me? Ms. Burke, can you hear me?
Yes, right there.
Ms. Burke?
Good evening.
This is Ms. Page, the Chair of the School Board. I ask you to state your location and why you at the location.
Thank you, Ms. Page. I am in Dubai and I'm here for a family and friends event.
Thank you. So, board members, do we need a motion to allow Ms. Burke to participate?
Madam Chair, I've said we that we allow Cheryl Burke to participate via teleconference from Dubai, not in heaven, ever.
It's been moved by Ms. Young and seconded by Ms. Barlow to allow participation of Ms. Burke at the school board meeting via teleconference while she is in Dubai. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bienvenidos a la reunión especial de la junta escolar de Richmond. Welcome to the special meeting of the school board of Richmond. If you need Spanish or whatever, please let us know. Si ocupa el tema en español, por favor, te avisamos. Gracias.
Thank you. Gracias. Ms. Burke, can you hear?
Very well, thank you.
Thank you. The next item, Madam Clerk? The next man is 1.02, Page of Allegiance, by the bottom of the silence.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as all.
May you see it? The next item is 1.03, back to the agenda, just one change, and that is to move item 7.02, which is to receive approval of superintendent's 2019-2020 SMD and 2019-2020 CFP budget. May I motion?
Madam Chair, also, I don't know if to do it this, I'm starting to feel that it's driving me crazy. I'm sorry, I hope everybody can hear me. I want, at this time, if we can, I don't know if this time you can do it, but I am respecting that we do postpone the approval of superintendent's 2019-2020 SMD, as well as the 2019-2020 CFP budget, as articulated on the communication after the, oh, one, we asked for an extension early on in the process. I believe Markali, Mr. Barlow, asked if we could put forward, just a request for an extension with the city. Early on, I'm not sure what happened with those conversations. But, second, very uncomfortable because, you know, this is a lot of information and we have not really had benefit of the board coming together to aggregate all of the information and make recommendations accordingly to deliberate them. And, second, you know, when we're talking about our cuts, they're far too massive with potential for long reaching and long lasting implications, not yet considered, much less discussed, to have this type of void and thoughtful and long deliberation. And also, I'm just extremely concerned that, you know, we've not fully addressed our need or our priority. Yes, we've talked about the strategic plan, but the plan does not fully encompass nor does it address all of our current needs to move this district forward with urgency. So, I don't know if we can do it now.
So, Ms. Cosby, we have to approve the agenda first and what your concerns, what you share, can be discussed during this budget deliberation. So, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Ms. Barlow to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, the agenda has been approved as amended. Next. The next item is 1.04, through the directed minutes of the December 19th, 2018 school meeting. Minutes of the January 22nd, 2019 school board meeting, January 24th, 2018 budget work session. And then February 7th, 2019 budget work session. We did receive some collections from the January 22nd minutes from his own, those, his own. Those collections have been made and will be posted. Need a motion?
I believe that we approved the minutes as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Young to approve the minutes as corrected. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, the minutes have been approved as corrected. The next item is item 2, recognition.
Good evening. Our first recognition is for our student representative, Isis Tu Barry. This is the second and final, actually is joining us, at least this year anyway. Ms. Young noted that Isis Tu is a sophomore, which makes her a rather special addition to the board. Usually, we have individuals who are seniors, but Isis Tu was such an impressive student that would want to picture that she had this opportunity earlier in her high school career. And we hope this has added to your confidence in expressing your voice because it is a very important one. So, we hope that you keep sharing it in school and beyond. So, if anyone could, please join me in recognizing Isis Tu Barry. Let's take a picture. Ms. Kaylee, would you like to come on down?
Any family support system, please come forward at this time. Ms. Jones?
Jones, yeah. Just come on. Let you off the hook, okay?
We are the fortunate ones that you have joined us and provided such invited input to this process. So, thank you.
It is also a school board recognition month. And so, I'm delighted to be able to share these certificates of recognition to our school board members. So, beginning with Mr. Barlow, thank you very much. Ms. Gibson, thank you very much. Ms. Young, thank you very much. Dr. Sapien, thank you very much. Ms. Cosby, thank you very much. Mrs. Burke, thank you very much. Paige, thank you very much. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Owen, thank you very much. And our fabulous clerk, Ms. Gibson, thank you very much. And our fabulous clerk, Ms. Collins, thank you very much. And Ms. Door, I'll put her right here as well, thank you very much.
Superintendent Camus, can you just mention the PSA announcement over the radio regarding school board recognition?
Yeah, their public service announcement, thank you, thanking the school board for their contributions. And I just want to say thank you for their support, partnership, and guidance, and leadership of the public service.
Thank you. The next item is public information. I mean, I have any speakers to sign up in advance, if you would be willing to. Since we do not have any speakers that have signed up in advance, if we have members in the audience at this time, please come forward, sign in, and state your name. So, if you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. And if you're speaking for the organization, you have five minutes. And please remember your call. You can wave your hand to indicate your support. So, again, if you are planning to speak, please line up, line up at this time. You may begin.
My name is Your Honor, and I just want to speak for, I guess, my job, but for the support of my house. Surprisingly, with all the problems, I witness to the morrow of employees and the proposed calendar, I'm not angry. What does upset me is that I have to come before the administration and the school board to advocate for myself and my coworkers because we have become disregarded groups. The proposed calendar shortens holidays, but only for central office staff members. The school based support staff, not teachers, we're not talking about teachers, I know too often. Those employees do not have shortened holidays. The proposed calendar has impartial following for holidays and for teachers. This is counterproductive. What needs to be considered and understood is that the office employees at the school are an integral part of the school district processes. For example, payroll, suspension, and vending payments. Their part of the process decides whether non-contracted employees will receive pay. If they're granted these off of central offices working, who will take the responsibility to lead the time work? So, everyone receives a paycheck on time. And therefore, you have employees too, because their off work will not meet the deadlines. This is only one of the negative impacts it may, should it count as a proof as it is, in fact, and it's not going to say. With all the focus of the administration being focused on teachers, the central office support staff has to come calling. Equity was what we always had, and that all 260 days, 12 months employees were saying. Equality is now what we have to advocate for. Because of location, the same employees being treated unequal. We are now being denied that which appears to be granted. The superintendent, our way of chief of staff, is clearly what is known as intent to treat 12 months, 260 day employees who work in school offices differently than employees who work as 12 months, 260 day employees in central offices. Is that not the creation of an unfair workplace? So, now, less than 12 months, 260 day employees who prove vacation six times the same rate as the central office employees would do not have to complete their 260 day agreed upon workplace. How is this fair to anyone? No, we're not jealous. We just want to be treated equally and we just want to be treated fairly. It's said by a school board member that all of the central office employees do is to give away a teacher that is doing it all. That is paraphrased, but why is it okay to speak off the cuff to the news reporter from a local news station who already tired central office staff and was once words with action? Additionally, when one school board member speaks in public like this, he or she speaks before. Thankfully, earlier today, this question was answered, how do you think? And one school board member assured me that her aim is to support both teachers and staff members. I feel assured she meant deeper. That is known that you want employees to expect in a workplace.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lady Rushmore, and February is also the Korean technical education month. On behalf of my colleagues, my administrator, and students at the Richmond Technical Center, I am here tonight for drinks and gifts in honor of school board recognition month. I assume that artists can make gifts for school board members, and I am here to deliver. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Ms. Burke? Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair. Ms. Page, Vice Chairman Ms. Door, school board members, and Ms. Camus. I am Angela Deuce, half president of the Richmond Education Association, and currently an exceptional education teacher at Armstrong High School. I am speaking on behalf of the entire support personnel of Richmond Public Schools, many of whom work here at ExaVox. This message is only a brief representation of their solid voices. We totally understand the need to cut jobs, but working in an already underspaced district puts an extra hardship on those who are already given 110% of their effort. There are so many questions. What's the plan once you eliminate the jobs? When will the staff be informed that their services are no longer needed? How will you compensate those who are left who will have to pick up the extra slack? Is there full understanding of the particular jobs that are being eliminated? Although the new administration feels they do diligence to right the wrongs of previous administrations, the problems and effects are much bigger than central office. As a school board, it is your legal responsibility to ask for what you need to fully run a productive school system, one that supports the many needs of our students here in Richmond Public Schools. If additional funding is needed, do that, ask for it. It is unfair to balance this budget on the backs of a few employees. Thank you for hearing our concerns, and we hope that as a school board, you are not, you are not, you not only have the students in mind, but the staff as well, because this will surely trickle down to the classrooms and the students that we serve. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Burke?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Just checking.
Yes, thank you so much.
Sheena Garrison. I am here to speak on behalf of central office. For one, there has never been an old chart that states who is central office. So, it's very unclear what targets you're planning on cutting from because you have not got a formal quote chart, which is required by law. Haven't seen it yet. When we're looking at these things, I don't think that everyone knows about the jobs they're planning on cutting. And for the school board member to make a comment that, and I quote, "The reason we're cutting from City Hall," that's us, "is because all they do, if they do anything, is stand in the way of our teachers and students." That's also a violation of the code of conduct. Would you think it's funny? Thank you very much. This shows a blatant disrespect for all of us that help to tend here of your operational needs. And I think if more of a budget is approved, that maybe there should be things that are looked at as budget cuts other than jobs, because there are a lot of overspending in departments that maybe should be reviewed prior to cutting jobs. And on that, I'm going to leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Chairperson, President of the School Board. My name is Kevin Stahls, and I stand before you as the Director of Ignite Richmond and coming to you as also a parent, that as we move forward with this discussion, understanding that there's 12 million dollars in cuts up for a vote, I believe that anything that deals with the reorganization of our departments and making cuts is critical functions and its critical functions should be discussed in the open session. This is superintendent, you indicated on numerous occasions that in order to deal with our budget shortcuts, that we need to cut some draw-offs. What these are, we don't know, and it's never been discussed in an open agenda. This isn't transparency. This isn't fair to the public because we don't have the opportunity to chime in at all or give any comment before the voting happens. The public wants to know why we're looking at making these cuts to save money for still creating new positions for larger salaries on our school below one resources. And you indicated on yesterday that this district does not have a line item for furniture. That's ridiculous. And for parents and students to have to raise money, that's not what we should be doing here in Richmond. While we're making cuts, when essential functions already aren't being performed, will these functions be put on others that already have a larger workload? That's a question that we don't have answers to. If it's the people that aren't fulfilling the duties, then that's another conversation. But, we must make sure that we're making the cuts at the right time, in the right places, and not just based on new leadership indicating cut, cut, cut. We're in a place where these cuts will affect us for years to come and even after, this administration is long gone. We've been here before. We don't want to go back because it didn't work for us then. We know that it's hard to make cuts, but I do think that the public needs to be included with that process. Our central administration staff play a critical role in our district when it comes to improving the learning environment and overall academic progress of our students. We look to them for their leadership and their guidance and their hard work. Creating meaningful learning environments and improving what our children deserve each and every day is difficult, but we look to them for that. On another note, this job is stressful, overwhelming, and hard. I am overworked, underpaid, underappreciated, questioned, and blamed for things that are out of my control. That's an RBS educator, not me. The majority of them work tirelessly, out of the classroom, as tutors, coaches, and sponsors, counselors, and even more. They spend time and time again helping develop our students for no extra pay. They give up time with their families to help mold our children, and then we ask them for even more from them. That's not acceptable, nor is it the right thing to do. We have concerns about attracting quality educators and retaining them, but here it is, this calendar that doesn't show that. So, moving forward, we ask that you put our children first, our educators first, and our community first when you're moving forward with making this vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board, I am the Chair of the Council of the Chaw Foundation. First, I would like to say, like, all the students and attendants and students and ladies to the second annual Queen City Summit, here on March 26th, 23rd, I'm sorry, March 23rd. I'm just asking you all, all young ladies, who would like to say, oh, ladies of the school board, that support, young ladies of the RBS sector. Most people know me here on the school board, know that I'm a true man of God, so I want to do it, I'm a true man. We, uh, we have some issues with our athletic department that I think you all are aware of. I'm not going to go parties to that. Uh, it's definitely, she's a problem. You're taking millions of dollars away from our young men and women just because I see what I'm doing. So, if you want to make cuts, I would choose first one to make. And for you, for your lives, for you, I would, I would do her job for free. I would, I thought, I would do her job for free, absolutely free. If that's what's going to take to get our kids what they deserve. We have, I'm seeing teachers that are overworking and underpaid, but she demands that she work in the building to be a coach. So, we got to do eight hours of school, then we got to do another four hours of coaching, and then somehow raise teachers, somehow get your lesson plans together, somehow be a great teacher and a great coach. It just doesn't make sense. Especially when you got people applying for your job that are overworked by that. So, in our opinion, in the word of God says, everything produces after its own kind. So, if you put a mediocre coach in front of a team, that's what you're going to get. If you put a great man of God in front of them that's been married over 20 years, has has his own company, produces things for the city, that's what you're gonna get out of your kids. So we have to make a choice. If you wanna do some cuts, that's the first one. Because if you do, you will see a lot change in the city. So like I said, I'm not gonna pull any punches, I'm not gonna hold back anymore. I've been doing this almost all three years now. Everything we do for RPS is not a part of that sport. Because we are blessed, we're truly blessed, we're prosperous, and we wanna teach our kids to be prosperous. And the only way we can do that is get us a fund then, and let us show. So, again, I pray to this school board, I pray for you all the time, and I will continue to pray, and I pray for Stephanie Ryan as well, but she's the overseer of athletics in the city of Richmond. You can't see that there's a problem. I can show it to you. I have documentation, I have video of everything that's going on in this city, to bring that to you, game after game, day after day, and nothing's getting better. So I'm asking you, there you go, I'm paying for you, make the changes. You make the changes, and we'll see results.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Robin Keegan. I'm a teacher at Get Heart and parent of a student at Howard Hill Middle School. It pains me that I have to be here again advocating for myself and college, to the people who are supposed to understand and respect what we do every day. In all my twenty years of teaching, I have never had to stand in front of this microphone as much as I have this past year. I'm taking more time out of my personal life to stand up against the system that does not seem to understand what it means to support teachers. It's the only profession where we are evaluated based on how much we sacrifice. The both school calendar is perpetuating this idea again and again. I understand the overall mantra of this new administration is whatever takes. Do you understand that's exactly what we've been doing? You preach that we have to stretch ourselves to the limits to provide for our students. You want us to nurture, care for, build relationships, and connect with our students? That is what we do. So my question to you is how are you connecting with your faculty and your staff? Because top-down policies do not work. You need to build relationships with us. When you add seven extra days to a calendar that is unequal without a discussion of compensation, I feel like I'm being taken advantage of. Adding seven days without compensation communicates to me as a twenty-year veteran in this city that we don't only work enough to earn our pay. Marching on January twenty-eighth was not just about pay for me, it was about respect. Keep in mind, teacher retention is also on your strategic plan. What are you doing to retain me? You can't afford to lose me. The gala won't keep me here. It won't. Respect. Respect, collaboration, honesty, and transparency will keep me here. You want us to build communities with our students, you want us to make us, make them feel valued, but my question is, how are you developing us? How are you building a community with your faculty and staff? How are you showing us you value us? Don't throw words at me. As an advocate for teachers, I'm also advocating for my students, my stu-, my childhood, Richmond proud, Richmond Public Schools. I'm tired of seeing so many teachers leave my school and this profession. I watch good talented teachers walk away from my school and my daughter's school. We have, we have to give them reasons to stay. I'm concerned that we lose these highly qualified teachers faster than you can recruit and train them. Teachers are mad about this calendar, and that frustration impacts our students. You want us to take care of our children? How can you expect us to do that when you won't take care of us? We are not asking for millions, we are not asking to work less, we are asking for fair compensation and respect for the work we already do. And thank you.
Good evening, school board. Again, Superintendent Cameron, education teacher at Armstrong High School. Do this. Four million dollars. That number sounds familiar, because I believe it was the exact same number of, number of dollars that we got last year as a one-time, and we knew it was one-time, boost in spending from the city. And now that the exact same amount, we have to cut. Because, and this was not a superintendent decision, this was something the entire school board voted on, we decided to use that one-time spending, that was very clearly marked as one-time spending, for recurring expenditures. And I fully believe that y'all had good intentions, and perhaps, and perhaps you still are, trying to call the city council bluff. And what hap-, but what happens if they call your bluff? Because you just gambled with other people's lives and homes. And once again, uh, just as some people noted specifically, we came in already spending more on, uh, our new leadership team than we had with past. And I know, I know Superintendent Cameras, because we've discussed this before, that you will say, "Well, that's not true, because by reducing the number of cabinet positions, I have saved two hundred thousand dollars." Okay. It could have been two fifty, it could have been three hundred thousand dollars if you hadn't egregiously raised the pay of all your new staff. And before you say we need higher compensation to attract the best talents in Central Office, keep in mind that I know that most of your Central Office and yourself came from DC, which has a higher cost of living. So effectively, we could have offered the same compensation we were already making, and it would have gone further for that. So once again, I'll repeat the question that I asked you that led to this discussion, which is, if it came down to it between funding your programs that you came here specifically to announce, such as, um, home visits, are you willing, and is your Central Office staff willing to take a pay cut to fund those programs? But that's not actually what I came here for, ironically enough. I came here about the calendar, and, uh, you might be surprised, it's not about the, uh, extra days, it's about Election Day. We have four Election Days in your draft calendar. And that doesn't make sense, because Superintendent Cameras, you have made a huge push this year about us lobbying the General Assembly, and yet the year that the entire General Assembly is up for elections, you want to spend all day in school.
Excuse me, I know everybody's upset, but could you please keep the child in the giggling there?
I'm sorry, that's all.
Thank you. Before we begin with the next speaker, members in the audience, please be respectful of individuals that are coming forward to speak. If you want to express support, show by waving, waving your hands. Again, please be respectful of individuals that have, that are coming forward to speak.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Reisner, and, um, like somebody has said, I am greatly saddened to be here tonight, once again, begging for respect from the people who should be our biggest supporters and cheerleaders. Down the map, when we are asking, you are asking us to work more days next year without any pay increase. This year, we were told we had to work more hours without a pay increase, and now also be working more days. In no other field would that ever be allowed to happen. My husband works for Wells Fargo, and if you watch the news, he saw they had some glitches with their system the last few weeks. Well, they were told they had to work some extra hours, but guess what? They got paid double for those hours. Never in a million years would they have expected their employees just to come to work for free, because that's not how it works to show, if you wanna show respect. I'm tired, tired of having to ask for things that should be a given, tired of feeling like I'm giving two hundred percent every minute of every day to my students and my school, and no one outside of those four walls seems to notice. Your calendar reckons this evening holidays similar to other local districts, but your work hours and your days are far more than any other district in this area. You say let's give teachers what they deserve, but then create a calendar when we get all those extra days, and like I said, more than anyone else around us. Those extra days are days where I will have to pay all day to take care of my own children without any extra compensation. That says to me that once again, you don't value me and my family. I want you to think about this when you're making your calendar. As a teacher, we all know, in order to get the best of our students, we have to build a relationship with them that's based on love, trust, and respect. I ask you to think about which of those you think you're providing us with, because a lot of teachers aren't feeling any of those right now. I will say that you've provided that for our students and our families like no other superintendent in all the years that I've been with RPS has, but not your teachers. We are the ones who sit and cry with our students as they discuss the trauma that they've experienced. We are the ones who celebrate with them when they reach a goal or had something awesome happen in their lives. We are the ones the students and their families are turning to daily. We do that quietly and without seeking any attention or any glorification for that, because that's what we do. We do that because we love our students and we love our families, but do not mistake our love for our students and their willingness to be treated like we aren't professionals. Remember, if you wanna get the best and keep the best, I suggest you show us that we mean as much to you as those students and families do. I hope, beyond all hope, that this is the last time that I have to stand before you and ask for something that every person deserves, that is respect.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board members, my name is Melissa Prudence. At the February twelfth budget work session, I was alarmed to hear that the CIP proposed budget is over twenty-one million dollars. I wasn't alarmed at the figure, how can I when the city continues to fund RPS facilities at sixty cents a square foot versus the industry standard of three dollars a square foot? I was, though, alarmed at the lack of a plan should the city not fund all or even half of this request. Significant time and energy has been spent discussing the operations budget and the plan should there be flat fundings from the city. This has not occurred with the CIP budget. This administration has stated over and over that it is about more than just buildings. Respectfully, I disagree. When these facilities regularly fail to meet our students' basic needs, such as heat when it's cold and air conditioning when it's hot, as well as classrooms that don't leak, this crisis deserves the same time and energy. One-third of RPS facilities are close to or one-hundred years old. Another third of the facilities are sixty to seventy years old. It is unrealistic to think that we can replace all of these facilities with new buildings. We recently learned from the news media that nineteen positions have been recommended for elimination from the operations facilities department. There is a great deal of institutional knowledge that comes from maintaining facilities as old as ours. It is unclear how such knowledge can be replaced. I have also reviewed the proposed calendar for next year and have some concerns. November eighth has three separate requirements for teachers that need. I can only imagine the preparation that teachers spend for parent-teacher conferences. Why would they be expected to complete two more requirements the same day? It's been my understanding that parent-teacher conferences are usually held twice a year, in the fall and spring. The proposed calendar has three, with the first day students, with one, the first day students and teachers return from spring break. How can teachers adequately prepare for conferences when they themselves are just returning from spring break? Our teachers continue to be tremendous assets, and they need to be able to spend time with their families and recharge in order to do the difficult work that they choose and continue to choose. Additionally, both Chesterfield and Hymicko calendars have schools ending June twelfth. Why is Richmond ending June nineteenth? If this later date is approved, are teachers being compensated for this additional time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dr. Holly Freeman, I am the Director of the Math Science Innovation Center, and I'm just gonna read some words that speaks to me, that, um, that I take to heart every day. Institutional racism manifests itself quietly, but devastatingly. Denying students of color access to all sorts of educational opportunities. Ms. Cameras, she wrote that, and I thank you for writing that. And that is the work that we do every day at the Math Science Innovation Center. We provide services for students, there's STEM, there, as you know, that is growing and that we need workers to be proficient in. We are, uh, we augment the work that's done at Richmond Public Schools, not just for those fourteen thousand students, but for the two thousand teachers that we work with as well. Students were there on Friday at the high school conference, they're there Saturday at the chemistry workshop, they'll be there next Saturday at the fourth, fifth grade workshop, there are always RPS students there, fourteen thousand of them. This is an issue of educational equity. I am a product of RPS, and I went to the Math Science Innovation Center in the mid-eighties. I left to go to school and came back thirty-five years later, and these state issues that you wrote about still exist. Times are changing, the entrepreneurship is increasing here, um, in Richmond. We need to work in different ways, we have new populations of kids coming, kids that don't only speak English. We need to continue to have enrichment services, not just for the kids who are so-called gifted, but for the kids who don't know how to gift a gift. But the kids who need opportunities to do this work, the kids who need opportunities to become interested in and passionate in something. We do that work, and we do it in service of RPS. My greatest moment, in the moment that I relive, when I read your book, the long article, but thank you for that little paragraph, that I wrote a grant for students to come together to work at NSIC. They're the kids of an affluent rural community, an affluent apartment rural community, working next to an RPS unit. They were on the floor pulling rockets, they were talking to each other about the content, but about each other. In a segregated system like the world, like the States, like Richmond, kids would have an opportunity to work cross-neighborhood, cross-racist, cross-language, but they do it at the Math Science Innovation Center. So I urge you to think again about the elimination funding for this valuable resource so that students like me can develop a love for biology, or nanoscience, or robotics, Danish, computer science. We owe that to our students as well. Thank you for your time, I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, students and all, school board members. My name is Sharon Jones, I am an employee of the Math Science Innovation Center. And about two thousand eighty-nine through two thousand six, I worked at our finance department here at the City Hall at the Richmond Public School. And one of my responsibilities was to pay invoices and to do reconciliation and to pay credit card statements for incurring expenses at the schools. The only thing that I knew about the Math Science Center at that time was the voyage club that I was a part of, and I just aged myself. But all I knew about it was that it was a check, it was an invoice, it was a mileage reversal. In two thousand fourteen, though, I got the privilege of being employed at the Math Science Innovation Center. And what I believe that I want to introduce to you is the meaning of that budget line that you're looking to reduce or to divest. In that budget line, there are times where I pay Carolina Biological so that we can send kids out to your school system so that they can learn from virtual teachings the anatomy of a bat. Through those payments, I've Through those payments, I paid to pay for vendors so that your teachers could come over for professional development so that they could learn skills and techniques on hands-on learning. I want to introduce to you a center that's not just a budget line, but the center is here to educate our students and to give them an experience that would allow them to move forward in this 21st century. I myself am a parent of a child that went to the Math Science Center on Saturdays, and he's now a physicist at NASA. I'm also a parent of nieces that went there, and they're now chemical engineers. So I want to allow you, to introduce to you, Math Science Innovation Center. At the Math Science Innovation Center, we have a science fair. And on that science fair, we're able to teach kids how to look at Mars in 3D. We also have a Challenger Center over there that's the only center in the state of Virginia where people, young kids, can come over and learn how to ride a mission to Mars. At the Math Science Center, we have an aquarium that shows for the three water systems so that our students can understand about all of the sea animals that are in the water systems in our community. At the Math Science Center is where I learned that I pay for hotels for our students to travel, to be able to go nationwide to ASL so that they can compete on the science and the science fair. So you may be asking, what's my point? Well, the point that I'm making is that, just like you, I thought the Math Science Center was only their expenses. What I've learned is that the Math Science Center is an experience. It's an experience where kids can come over and have hands-on participation. What we really want to teach them is to learn how to bring the subject matter alive so that they know how to go out and to pursue careers in that area. What the Math Science Center is hand-on learning to stimulate our students to work. It's not just the budget line, it's the time where we educate and arm our students in an educatable tool. MSIC represents more than just the budget line. It's student learning, it's an experience that cannot be compared to any other teaching. We give our educators that are in the school system a chance to see their children participate at a level and at a hands-on experience that's more and more memorable to our kids than you would ever know. So I want to ask you again to reconsider what you see as MSIC budget line. What MSIC is, is an experience so that our children can move forward in the 21st century. And I, Dr. Freeman, is a product of that. She is a woman who went through that system, and she was able to talk about in the TEDx program was showing up here. And that's what the Math Science Center is doing. We're allowing kids to show up and we're holding space for them to learn in areas that they would not have an opportunity to learn in. So finally, in my conclusion, I want you to reconsider and understand that we're more than just a budget line, we are an experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Delores, right now I'm speaking in public. My name's Amy Round. I'm here for the Seminoles School, and I have folks who actually speak on their behalf as well. But my name is Delores. If teachers in South Africa can ask someone to give the calendar a chance as a black night without compensation or general experience, they will actively seek to bring an officer access to that person. If the court staff continues to use substitutes on a daily basis for little or no extra compensation, they'll look elsewhere for employment. If new teachers or those that are new to the urban setting are not supported with training and caring mentors and a little bit of help light in the load when they go in the road, they will not stay at RPS. If season teachers are told that their jobs include unloading committees, sponsoring clubs, meeting grade levels, arbitrating them without being compensated monetarily for even the materials they will cease to participate in the whole school program and look elsewhere to counties to pay for the service of stipends. If teachers report theft of personal property and are thinking seriously, they will look for building with floors and locks. If teachers report threats of violence, such as, "I'm gonna spit on you, I'm gonna say you said this to me, I'm gonna cut you, I'm going to shoot you, I can't wait to see you after school," and the students are given no more than a tier-one disciplinary, which is a warning, a verbal warning. They will seek employment elsewhere if they feel safer. If teachers work in buildings with well-reported undocumented facility issues such as backup bathroom sewage, and most of the building holes in the partitions there are old bugs, rat mites and roach infestation, easily see mold go through walls and feces. Unclean carpets, obscene drawings left in bathrooms for years on the carpet because it's permanent water, and pitch black teacher parking lot due to seven non-working street lights at 5:00. They will support the building where they don't feel threatened for their safety or their health. If teachers... I'm gonna stop right there, alright. I've lived here my entire life, I've walked across the street and there's something that'll bark flats. I've lived in New Bridge, I was raised in Creighton Port, and in Bolton. I probably will take two tutors, will go to a tutor back to Bolton with me every Tuesday and Thursday nights, I've been to this one. I'm a fortunate generation East Dender, through and through, in New Bridge and Richmond. I'm the first one to graduate high school, to graduate college, of course, a very serious $30,000 a year income barrier. I'm here because, not because I want, I'm gonna leave, or not. I'm like many of you, I started teaching on a Tuesday, right after Memorial Day. And on Wednesday, my student, we called him Raymond, was shot twice in the chest in New Bridge. He was an 11th grader, and I stopped with him for those three months of recovery, and I'll stay sticking with him for another 15 years if I ask you please to look at my face and hear my body. And so, Mr. Kermes, please, 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 I'm praying that you are here for the long haul and that you don't ask us to work in classes with no walls, with 40 or more students in those... Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mar Jones. I am a parent of two RPS students at Tom Steffensen High School. And I feel I have done a disservice to my kids having that Tom Steffensen High School. My husband and I are products of Richard Public Schools, and we had great experiences there. I got into Howard University. I have no idea where my daughter's gonna go. Even though she paid eight, eighty, one hundred, four hundred, the transfers can't even get right. They're sitting in a facility with equipment, desks, chairs that are broken that were there before my mother was born in 1957. I don't know how the motto is, "Whatever it takes when nothing is being done that it takes." My mother, I'm a product of a single-parent home. My mother went to bed eating a sandwich or nothing at all in order for my sister and I to have a full course meal. I don't see that being done in Richmond Public Schools, not one in the 2017 budget. Eighty percent of that was for salaries. How much money would we have for furniture if you all took a 10% pay cut for the next two or three years? For the people at the top tier? There is no such thing as a line item for furniture, not even in a house. My daughter needed a mattress this weekend, so we would've got a mattress. There's no budget for a mattress, but we know what she needed, so we did it. You have to sometimes think outside of the box. There is only a box because you put yourself in a box. If you want to have the money there, you will have the money there. I don't understand how this is acceptable, I really don't. How much could it cost for a chair for a student? When my student, my children go to Pupinat or Maggie Walker for a game, Maggie Walker, that I might add, is in the middle of a neighborhood where no student goes there, and everything is new, shiny, and I can't even get a chair for my student. I don't understand that. College preparation. I look at Highland Springs, and they have so many people signing for signing day that they can't fit them all on a stage. RPS has three students. I don't understand that. We have great students at RPS schools, but we are doing them a disservice. I actually got applications for Trinity and Collegiate to send my kids there. I vowed that I would not do that, but I have, because I feel like I have no recourse. I feel like nobody's doing anything. My neighbor, she drives 45 minutes outside of the city to teach every day because she cannot bring herself to go to the elementary school three blocks away. This is unacceptable. We have to stop just looking at a piece of paper and do something. Kids and parents should not be asked to make a GoFundMe account or raise money for facilities, not after they work all day and have other things they have to do. This is unacceptable, and I don't know how you all sleep at night.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening. My name is Nicole Clum, and I'm a teacher, and I'm a parent, and I live in the city. I live in the city, close, right around the corner from the Shaw Middle School. So I'm a community member, and that neighborhood, I'm a teacher and a person, a contact in the community when the parents are working. So I applaud to you to make sure that we're funding our schools for the after-school programs and funding the teachers, because I know these teachers work very, very hard, long hours, extra time after school. You've heard this stories today, and I talked to you, and I shared with you that many teachers have been spending many hours to the place where, actually, the reason why I came, I'm actually a fellow, I'm a teacher that was called here to Richmond as I was recruited to work here. And I came in on a march, I came in in March while I had to replace a teacher who was working at Bellino Booth, who had to work two jobs. Now, the reason why I had to replace her job is because she fell asleep in the classroom, and she did not get her students outside doing a fire drill. Her students had to head on a team to take in a nap, and she was also taking a nap, and she had worked two double shifts seven days a week. Because she was a veteran teacher, about to retire, and she didn't have enough money to cover her own costs. But a new teacher came in and thinking double what she does, signed two of you to take care of your teachers that've been there for many years. I also am going to use my last minute to share with you that I'm also advocating for the Math Science Innovation Center. This is the center, and it's your shining star of RPS. I want to remind you that not all of your funding goes to the Math Science Center. It's actually funded by five districts. It is the 21st century learning facility that gives professional development to the teachers, gives rejected students a legitimate opportunity, brings advice, bridges the gap among young and old, and brings all communities together. It's like the saying, "Would you close 90 miles for a sovereign school?" You wouldn't, but that time generation has been here for 52 years. My goodness, 50, but we've had a sign. This is part of this community, you can't cross that path. Your teachers deserve over 1,000,000 students, and they actually have a passion. More than currently, it's a place for everyone to learn. You have a lot of people that are in need, that don't owe the opportunity to be there. You've got a lot of people that need to be there. I want to thank you. I'm going to be there. Come on. Let me, in the camera, and to you, and me. I'm going to talk to you about toys, toys, and toys. The one thing that I saw today that really upset was the GoFundMe. And you know that I am the president of the education department. My name is Mariah White. I am the educator for education, as well as I have finished all children, and this is what I do soon. And what I want to say today is very, very terrible. Water fountains. Now, not going to be the water fountain, because they didn't have any water fountain that they could try to add in. And I can have a bucket water fountain that I've seen in the last two weeks that has a plastic bag covered with duct tape everywhere. Thank you, guys. Now, I'm going to be speaking about the water fountain. It's a shame that sixty water fountains are stupid. And then sixty water fountains that are cheap. Scott Allen, he's been able to run the night and come in to the school. I'm tired of dealing with him, but I'm glad he's here. Tell him, do, let him do, tell him, daddy, do. And that's very pretty, do, come in, daddy. I'm going to the school three times a week, there are three thousand things. And we can't, those things come in and they're there, they stay there at night. Maybe they stay there, they're sleeping at night. They're bad things, they're hard in the air. They do not get my attention, now you're not getting it, they're not getting it. That's very, very nasty. You have the guy who has taken a life exam again. You have the time, they're kicking their ass, and they're not paying, and they're waiting to speak. If that's very good, then I'll leave you, because they're still not conditioned. Because they're not ready to listen, they're not ready to see, they're not ready to hear. That's the biggest thing that they are not starting to hear. They're not ready to hear, they're not ready to hear. You just keep them, they're not ready to hear, they're still here, next to us, they're not ready. They're not ready to hear, they're not ready to hear. So, yeah, I just had to get it out. Daddy, do, 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 daddy, education, daddy. Daddy, do, 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 daddy, do, 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 do. That is unacceptable. But I do, you're not gonna get a select, you're not gonna have a team that have a kid that has it, that is unacceptable. And I'm tired, you have to do, tell you what we need. I got shit, the team I'm gonna do, now I'm here for your family. You should make it, please, thank God, please, thank God, guys. Anything, ask for more for those guys, because there's nobody checking them down. And the president, he doesn't do it. The school, and the second district, and the district, and the state, nah, nah. I'm not, I'm not, he doesn't, and I'm not, he doesn't, he doesn't. You can get out of there.
Thank you.
Sharon, we have, my name is Mariah, we have been speaking this time. It's your, the time that you're going to be here. So, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right. Uh, we see the IQ. Yeah. Are you on the, um, what? No, that's okay. That's okay, Ms. Walk.
I know that we approved the December 2019, 2020 estimate of the 2019, 2020, 2023 KIP budget.
It's been moved by the board and ratified by the store to approve the superintendent's estimate of the 2019, 2020, estimate of May and 2019, 2023 KIP budget. Any discussion? Just pause me.
Okay, I'm just going to reiterate, I'm going to repeat that I am asking that we postpone voting on this budget, that we build in some additional workshops so that we can fully vet the recommendations that have come from administration so that we can really look at our needs, so that we can prioritize, and we can fund accordingly. While I appreciate, yes, the $12 million or the $13 million cuts, as I have articulated to my colleagues many times before, I do not want us to be in a situation where as we handicap ourselves, let's say. And we have to think very carefully because these cuts could potentially have very long-reaching and long-lasting implications. And once the money is gone, you cannot recoup it. And there's not a situation where as we cut now and we think perhaps next year or the year after that we can recoup it. So I really want more opportunity for us to deliberate because I feel as if we've received information from the administration, but there's been very little opportunity for the board to discuss it. And this took... but there's been very little opportunity for the board to discuss it in its totality. We've gotten academic piece one time, the facilities piece another time, but we have not really been able to delve into it and really think about our needs and our priorities. And as we've heard from many people, clearly, we have, we all know we have significant needs. And so let us mark both.
Mrs. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I agree with Ms. Cosby, I think when, uh, I think she, she raised a very important point about being very careful, um, when making cuts. I understand that we've had a number of sessions now. I think, um, we, we really haven't had much in the way of public comment at a lot of them. I was glad to see that we had so many people here this, uh, this evening to talk with us. Uh, I think that, um, we should take some time to reflect on what we've heard, take some more time to reflect on what we're seeing, uh, with the budget. And I just think, uh, generally speaking, it may be helpful for us to at least have another session where we can come together as a group and talk through the, uh, the budget proposal in its totality. And, um, just generally speaking, I think, um, you measure twice and cut once. Uh, I don't want to be in a situation where, uh, where anyone is uneasy about making a definitive determination about the, uh, the budget. And I don't think that, uh, delaying or putting in place another meeting uh, would be a significant burden on us as a board. If anything, it gives us a better opportunity to discuss it and gives the public more opportunity to weigh in.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. Um, uh, to begin, I want to thank the folks that came and spoke today. Um, I was moved by your comments. I, uh, been frustrated during this budget process and, um, the folks that came and spoke today filled me with hope. So thank you. Um, I, uh, I, 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 I think that, I didn't, uh, when I ran for the school board, of the votes that I thought that I'd have concerns with, the vote that had to retain with identifying needs wasn't one of them. That's the reason why I ran, right? I mean, this is what we're supposed to be doing now, is talking about the things that we need. And, um, so you put a list of things that we need and, and I anticipate that I would say, and now, um, right now, so we're, we're tasked by the state of Virginia to identify needs and we, we, we haven't, we haven't done that. Um, that's clear by the fact that, uh, you know, we don't have a line up for furniture. Um, and that, that hasn't been discussed. So, you know, we, we don't need to be cutting right now. Um, and we do need a budget document and budget information that has more detail than what we have now. Um, it, there's, there is a lack of balance to the, the amount of discussion that we've had about cuts relative to the conversations that we've had about needs. And that's, that's what we are tasked to do right now. Um, and so, yes, I, uh, would support another meeting to, 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 to talk about the budget. Um, in fact, I, I, I think we should start that now. Um, but, but, but continue the conversation. There are some things that I think are, um, imperative that we talk about adding in, whether it be furniture. I want to make sure that, you know, the amount that we have for transportation. Last year, we were talking about whether we were giving ten cent rings an hour. I mean, we got into some detail and, and thanks to that, you know, we've been able to recruit more bus drivers. Um, I, 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 we, we don't have that level. We haven't talked about healthcare and whether that's going up. We haven't talked about the school maintenance. We only got the capital improvement plan in our last meeting. Um, we have more work to do. Um, and, uh, I would like to begin that now. Um, and I agree that, uh, voting this evening would, would be premature.
Mrs. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure where to begin. Uh, there's a lot to say, but I promise to be as concise as, as possible. Uh, first, I want to, uh, want to convey that, uh, for the first time in three years, uh, and it's not that we will this evening, but my first time in three years, I'll be voting affirmative for a budget for Richard Public Schools. And specifically because they include thirteen million dollars or something near thirteen million dollars in cuts. And not for, not for the sake of cuts alone, but for two reasons. One, that was articulated by a few folks, uh, this evening, but I'll say it a little differently. And, and specifically, my priority is the classroom. My priority will always be the classroom, our teachers and principals and persons in the building. And, uh, and yours truly did not speak off the cuff in an interview, but, uh, for anybody in my district, nine months on the campaign trail, and, uh, that, uh, regularly spoke to, uh, my disdain for anybody that would get in the way of our teachers. And that includes candidly, too frequently, persons downtown. Uh, the other, uh, the, the other reason that I'm, I'm going to vote affirmative for this budget is for the aforementioned reason specifically, because we can increase the percentage of loans in the classroom, in the schools. And, uh, and I, and I commend the, the team, our team, the school board for putting a proposal in form, in front of us, uh, that constitutes an opportunity to do that. But, uh, Madam Chair, I'm unsure of, I'm unsure now is the time. I did want to introduce another, uh, subject that was also addressed this evening by some folks that rightly pointed out that it's, in my opinion, very important that, uh, we do everything, and some of my colleagues, including, uh, Ms. Gibson, Mr. Barlow, just spoke to us, uh, and articulated it better than I can. But, uh, I think it's very important that we disclose to all those persons downtown, including folks that candidly, at that time, have been critical of, uh, but also persons in the public, first and foremost persons in the public, all of our stakeholders. It's important that we disclose all the information, including those personnel cuts. And so I would, uh, I would propose, I, I think because there is a motion on the floor, I'm unable to do this now, uh, Madam Chair, but I, I do intend subsequent, whatever transpires to the motion, then, to, to amend that we would this evening, as a part of our conversation, disclose the personnel cuts, including the specifics relevant to the forty-nine. And I don't know if it would be accepted as a, I don't think it would be accepted as a friendly. Yeah, so I probably, I think I'll do that. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in, in light of the fact that the topic was brought up about having a, another opportunity to discuss the budget, um, and I'll defer to Ms. Lolee's guidance with regard to Robert's rules, my impression is we're in the middle of, right. So, uh, I would respectfully request that Ms. Owen would draw her, uh, motion to allow us to have a vote on letter two, have a further meeting.
Well, I would appreciate some guidance on the fact that we have a deadline. And I know that, as Ms. Cosby referenced, it was, um, there was some discussion about asking the mayor if we could delay our, giving him what he needs to prepare his budget, because this is not a final budget. This is our proposed budget, the superintendent's proposed budget. It goes to the city, goes to the mayor, and the mayor does his budget, goes to the city council. I can guarantee you, it will be adjusted before it comes back to us to vote on finally several months from now. And so there'll be plenty of opportunity, once the city council has done their thing, to us, for us to see what they have said and see what we're going to do about that. Um, so I ask about that deadline before I was, uh, make that change.
Let us continue, if they, if board members did have comments to, comments to share. Okay. So, so, Mr. Barlow, you finish?
Well, I, I do, I do, um, think it would be helpful to get an answer to this question before we continue discussion on, on the budget, on the substance of the budget, so that we know what direction we're heading in, or we, uh, say other piece on the substance of it.
So, Mrs. Simmons? We have a deadline.
Good evening all. Um, you've been driving towards the first week of March. Uh, I think it's March sixth, I'm looking for that.
Um, Mrs. Young, before you speak, we have other members that have raised their hand. So we have, Mr. Barlow just completed, finished Dr. Supini and Ms. Dor.
And Ms. Cheryl Burke?
Thank you. He looked at his first talk on the budget that I said, you know what? Let's act with intention. I think that, set in place, angle from there. Because this, this does, uh, seem a bit rushed. I've not had the opportunity to really, as Miss Condon mentioned, probably talk about it. Um, although I'm sure some folks are ready. This budget season has been very difficult and different, uh, for various reasons. Been difficult because it's not what we're used to. In that, uh, typically, we would weigh on what our needs were and have an ask. But this time around, it seemed like we were trying to make a decision before you're asking. So in essence, what's, uh, what's the sense of asking? If you read here, come on. Um, I understand, you know, having cuts this deep, of course, board, personnel, non-personnel, it's very uncomfortable for all of us, as we can see. I, for one, I waited patiently to kind of hear what was coming up, what strategy was in place to offset these cuts. I still, I don't, I don't, I still don't see that. Um, in medicine, when I'm faced with some sort of severe infection or ulcer, I don't just say, you know what, you need to cut it off. I do everything in my power, look at every option, seek other support, before I make a final decision, because when you cut it, that's it. I have great reservations. So my preference would have been to make the attempt to speak to the city person before doing anything else. With thirteen million dollar cuts on the line, as I've said, and I asked more than one occasion, will this negatively trickle down to the classroom? And I, I'm, I'm confident that unfortunately, it would.
Ms. Burke? Dr. Supi, Dr. Supini is speaking now.
I'm sorry, I'm looking around, I'm getting ready to put my phone into the, not so I can say better about it.
Okay. So it's. Okay. So Doc, so Ms. Burke, is Dr.? So Doc, so Dr. Supini is speaking now, then Ms. Dor, and then your chance.
Yes, I heard, thank you.
Okay.
As a result of cuts this deep, and I feel negatively impacting the classroom, how can we even strive to achieve those goals that we set for ourselves for the classroom? We talk about equity. As someone mentioned earlier, what, what is the equity? Not just for the, the students, which we always talk about, but for also the teachers and other staff who are very much a void. I have to also speak about the Math Science Innovation Center. Fifty-plus years. And, and many of you know, of those fourteen thousand students I sponsored personally, as many of them as possible, whoever would, regardless of what district you're in. So I can't in good conscience say, oh, well, you know, let's, let's cut out the Math Science Innovation. I have mentioned to Jason before, not too long ago, about looking at a documentary called Science Fair. In this documentary, you saw students all across the world excited about a science fair. They walked their way, just like their lives, essentially, to get to the, as someone mentioned, the International Science Fair. What are we, as RPS supporters, going to do for those students who are dreaming to get to that International Science Fair? We can't count on Chesterfield, you're like, why do we don't care? What other division pulled out? We need to find the money to fund it. If that important, because we need it more than they do. They have resources, they have other support. I will always continue to support the Math Science Innovation Center. I'm deeply concerned with this process. As I mentioned, I think the first day we spoke about this was cutting your nose to spite your face. Now, you saw the, uh, the passion of those that spoke tonight. I think many of us have that same passion. It's either not fair, we don't think we can change, but there's a right and a wrong way to do it. I cannot support this, and I will vote no.
Ms. Dor?
Actually, I would.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just finished.
That's okay. I'm very much moved. And, and you all know, I typically do not care to speak and say things that people have already said. I don't know necessarily. But tonight, of who anyone came up, I looked at what I wanted to say, because I thought of that point. Anyone that feels that this is just and right, I think you will. This is not a, it should not be viewed as a fly-by-night decision and as Miss Cosby mentioned, we had the opportunity to set the, the, the plan properly, have as many discussions as we need to, because again, you can't go back. You know, I can't in good conscience look at anyone that had either spoken tonight or anywhere else that matters. that had either spoken tonight or anywhere else by Madison, say, you know what, um, I did this because, you know, felt the will of the board, the majority. You can do it anyway. You don't go along together. That's not the right way to do this. I mean, I've shared, shared with all that when you work hard, you should be compensated for that. And trust me, I may be a physician, but I have no qualms. If I had to, I would give it downs. So when I hear, oh, let's cut these positions or whatever have you. But yet, I've heard many people speak about tonight and before, certain folks are making so much more. That doesn't seem fair. I do recall you mentioned that if you weren't, the fingers to the bone. You know what? For those that are working hard and not being compensated, they want to see the flesh right now.
Ms. Dorr, Ms. Burke. And Ms. Gibson.
Thanks. Yeah, I don't think any of us take this decision lightly. Respectfully feel like we have had a very good budget process. We spent over an hour talking with the superintendent about what we wanted to see in this process. And I think that the following six multi-hour work sessions were a reflection of the guidance that this board gave. I feel like I've had an opportunity to pull forward some things in strategic plan that I felt were a higher priority. I felt like I've had an opportunity to understand the cuts and understand that it's not cuts for cuts sake, but it's about getting smarter, doing things differently, and allocating more dollars to the classroom, which I think we all agree on. That said, I want to make sure that my colleagues have an opportunity to vote on an extension. I personally do not want an extension, and I will vote no on that extension request, but certainly would be open to the will of the board there. I'm prepared to vote on the budget tonight, and I would like to vote yes, but happy to also open it up for a vote to the board who want to explore.
Ms. Burke?
Yes, thank you so very much. And I hope you can hear me. Okay, I'm guilty for that. And I have to accompany you. You did work. You amplified the voice, but I can't help that enough. But you're all, uh, being my next woman. This two years, that's why we've been a lot of problems, cutting out. That's fine, what was done beforehand could have been cut. And we were again, which is expected, because this is the part I can start going to establish on the board. We had the opportunity to have public children. Also the opportunity to loop them closer. And to, uh, affect the people. I remember you met, we had a call. And, uh, I think it was when many people spoke tonight, and I totally understand. It was all to the use of equipment, and it was to the use of things that paid, and it was to address the structure of our building. And this is why I was just like, we evidently functionally, every item is addressed perfectly well. Be mindful that we must move on the facilities that stay where we are. Be mindful also, and sometimes they find that the value of the decision, I continue to give back the challenge of what's been given to us from the city. And we know we're going to get them back, and we'll go back to the board. So you don't want to put ourselves in a position if this do not, do not come to pay every item. I am comfortable on my end with the fact that I'm comfortable on my end with the response that I have received. And I'm happy about some of the situations that's been due the best, uh, such in the state department. No, I am not. But somewhere, someplace, we have to do something to move forward in the best interest of everyone's child. I am very conscientious that this school will not be touched at this point. But again, we have to try to. No, I will not support this thing. Yet, I am ready to talk, but I have to talk to them all, but we have to talk to them, to that student now.
Ms. Gibson? Are you finished, Ms. Burke?
She's been killing.
Are you finished?
Hello? Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, remind us as a board that, you know, as a city, the idea that the school system has been wasteful has been reiterated again and again and again. And I felt that we were past that when we marched for more. I also want to remind us that because of that ongoing narrative that this system has been wasteful, the city, the school system, the business community came together and paid for, not one, but two third-party reports that made an assessment of the budget. That first one was completed in 2016, and that was the Bella of the Report, which identified that our central office costs were not above average. And then, most recently, by the Council of Great City Schools, which we review as a board, it was again identified that our central office cost were, in fact, somewhat below other schools that were in that similar cohort. So the fact that we are here now talking about what was reported in a newspaper as being, what, a twenty percent cut to central office is sizable. And it gives me incredible pause. I I think it's also important to note that in this document that we have to vote on tonight, it doesn't even fully know what this budget is. We do not have a document that clearly identifies what are all the things that we are adding, how many positions are we adding, how many positions are we cutting, to get to this final number. There are a lot of numbers there, but not, and I will tell you, it is page twenty-three of our budget last year that is missing from this document. That gives me pause. From a process standpoint, I wanted to suggest, in terms of the discussion tonight, that we begin by voting on my colleague Cosby's motion, which she had put forth before we even began this, which was to delight this vote. I think we should, you know, continue with that vote. It sounds like it will not pass, but I think that as a, you know, as a courtesy and to do our due diligence, and she had addressed that in the beginning, I think that that should be the way to proceed. And then, I think that it would also make sense, just from a logistics standpoint, since my colleague, Mr. Young, had requested that we put, we are transparent in the cuts specifically that are being made, that we do that prior to a vote as well. I will be frank, I think it is too late. We should have been transparent. We've had two public hearings when a third of our budget, nobody knows about. I am not at liberty to tell you the concerns I have with some of the cuts being made. That puts me at a handicap. And I recognize that we are concerned about confidentiality, but I will tell you, if I was looking in central office, I would want to know. And I don't see people suing because we let them know. So that is my request for a process standpoint, that first, we vote on whether or not we have to vote tonight, but then we vote on whether or not we forward with the list, and then we proceed with voting on the budget.
So, thank you for your comments. So we will have to, I want to revise and give some clarity. Ms. Cosby did not make a motion, but Ms. Dorr will have to withdraw her motion to vote on the budget, and then make a motion to extend if that, and if that motion passes or fails. Right, she'll have to withdraw.
And so let me, um, I want to say this. This is never an easy process. Never. Even having served before. Cuts are hard. But this process that we are undertaking now is a process that we'll be going through again once we receive the bottom line figure from the city. So this whole process that we are going through now, the real work will begin when we receive the numbers, the final numbers from the city. We do not take this process lightly. We have had seven budget work sessions to include two public hearings. Also, board members have the opportunity to meet with the superintendent, one-on-one, on a monthly basis. We have added additional budget work sessions. Again, we will be back at this table, having this same discussion with the real numbers that we will receive from this city. Cuts are not, this process is never an easy. And I take this very seriously. And we must keep our goal in mind in the forefront, soon achieved. Because at the end of the day, that is what matters, our students.
Mr. Young? Mr. Vallow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, uh, I'd like my colleague to elect me to prefer and prepare to vote this evening. And there is a motion to defer our role, rather than voting for this evening. But I do concur with my colleague to my mind that it would, I would invite my esteemed colleague from the night, if she would be willing to withdraw the motion so we could have a substitute motion for this call.
So for Ms. Dorr's motion, our student.
Assistant, she wants to leave us.
Have we found words to leave with us tonight?
Once again, I'm thankful to be here, and the budget thing did confuse you a little bit, but it was just, um, to teach you that you're not so down to say thank you. It's nice to see that y'all have our backs and I know it's hard, like, this is very complicated as to like adding all of these like parts, like utilities, salary, ESL, all that. And whatever happens, like, the students know that they're taught high. And we know they're taught, yes, like, what y'all deserve. That's a good thing. I'm gonna do the best I can.
Thank you. Ms. Dorr?
Okay, I withdraw my motion. Ms. Dorr will...
Ms. Dorr has the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we schedule at least one additional, schedule an additional budget session to give everyone the opportunity to, well, leave it at that.
So you request an extension?
Yes. The second person is faster. Madam Chair, I move that we add an additional budget meeting at a time agreed upon by members of the board on RPS administration.
And the extension. Is that part of your motion?
Well, my impression at this point is that the deadline is first week in March, so just to clarify, excuse me, the mayor is releasing his budget on March 6th, so we need to send in ours while in advance.
On the schedule that you gave?
Can we finish the motion, and then we can have a discussion if we need?
Sure.
The motion was made by Mr. Vallow, submitted by Ms. Gibson, then the add an additional budget meeting at a time agreed upon by the board and RPS administrators next week.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to note that in the budget timeline that was developed and shared with the board, we had identified February 26th as the date that we would be delivering the budget, the statement that needs to be made.
Call in question? Ms. Cosby?
I just want to, you all know the direction this is going in, but I just want to reiterate that this process, what my colleagues said, this process has been very different. And it's been very different in that it's been piecemeal. And it was piecemeal because according to the administration, no, there were, the cuts were tremendous and there was not a complete plan. So, now we're asked to vote on something that has been delivered in a very piecemeal manner. Without the opportunity to look at everything in the aggregate. And look and really discuss the priorities and the needs. And no, we have not done that. And yes, yeah, many people, yes, you can talk to the superintendent. And you can articulate what you want, but then it has to come back to the board because this is a board process. This is a board process. And I can articulate something to the superintendent all the day long, but if it's not reflective, what does it matter? We have asked questions along the way, and I have to disagree, we've asked questions along the way that have not been answered. Just our last board meeting, we asked a question about, uh, even the audit. Now, did we get an answer at this meeting? No. Or maybe that's gonna come later, I don't know. But it should have come before we vote on this because of budgetary implications. There have been questions about the national center. And yes, other people have pulled out, but what are the ramifications? Has that been answered? No. We've asked for organizational charts that showed the number of people who have been hired year-to-date, year-to-date. We've asked for organizational charts that show vacancies as well. I'm sorry, I, maybe I missed it, I don't know. So, um, um, this process has been different, and different does not always mean better. It's not. You know, and yes, cuts are very hard. And as you know, Ms. Page, yes, you've gone through this before. And we've gone through this when there has been a recession. And we thought $11 million was troponin', we thought $17 million was troponin', and we fought to keep those dollars. I'm just saying, we just need to really think. I'm not saying, hey, yes, there's always opportunities for efficiency. Every organization, there is every opportunity for greater efficiency, absolutely. But what are our needs? How do we get from point A to point C? To point B, I'm sorry. As quickly as we can with the sense of urgency, our kids have waited too long. And there's always a question, finding, finding, finding. We're cutting even before we get definitive answers. We're putting ourselves in a box, which the box can even get smaller. What are our needs? And that is what I'm asking my colleagues that we really delve into. We might end up with this being 13, but it might be way less. 13 million was put out there. Did not mean that we had to say, we had to say yes. If our needs don't call for that. So no, this process has been that, and we have not received answers. And this process has been one that has been, there are opportunities for improvement.
Ms. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do, um, think, uh, Ms. Cosby and I agree on what we want to happen here. We don't necessarily agree on, um, on everything with regard to how the process has gone. I do want to say that, uh, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to have a number of in-depth meetings with the administration and with the board members. I do appreciate the opportunity to sit down with the superintendent and speak about the budget. Um, my thought, generally speaking here, is that if, uh, if people are uneasy and we can schedule one more meeting to finalize this and have, you know, people sort of remediate on it a little bit, then we're going to be better off as a board. So, that's, uh, that's my hope for this motion.
Call the question.
The motion was made by Mr. Barlow, seconded by Ms. Gibson, to add an additional budget meeting, at a time agreed upon by members of the board and our case administration next week. Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
And Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Dole?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
Will you pass this round for her?
So, we need to decide on a date for the additional meeting? So.
I will leave myself there. Anytime.
So the option? Okay. 25th? 21st? So, the 25th.
Okay.
So, the administration. Ms. Burke?
This is, yeah, excuse me, I'm so tired. We were just going and going there and there. This is only going on, I was, I was.
Ms. Burke, we need, we read the motion, but you cannot take your one, change your vote.
Okay, now apparently I just heard the bachelor's, but I'm not in favor of it. I did not have that, that, uh, both the bachelor's and the father's. I'm in kind of separate, I don't think he's, but I told him.
Madam Chair, I don't want to poison the well here, but, you know, I'd gladly refer to either of our two attorneys. Uh, but, and the court, who's a part of the attorney, but I seem to recall from a long time ago and under that preliminary that Robert Rule provides for, if you're in the majority, if you're on the prevailing side of the vote, you can request leave consideration, yes ma'am? Because all that tuition, all that tuition money paying off all three years.
That's reconsideration of the motion. She can put that back, but she cannot change her vote from this.
Right, yeah, so it would need someone to.
Can you, did you hear that, Ms. Burke?
I can't hear Mr. Young well at all. Black and white, and Ms. Dole, well, together, it matters to the, uh, microphone. Take this plane with your face to exactly.
Is there, I guess, is it, is the vote done, or is there an opportunity for, if we reconsider it, then we need a motion to reconsider it? So, if I make a motion to reconsider?
You can.
Cheryl makes a motion to reconsider?
So, the clerk is going to repeat.
Motion?
Yes. The clerk is going to repeat it. Ms. Cosby, hold on one second.
I just have to, I hear you, but I thought we already had, um, the advice. You cannot change the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
So, what Mr. Bar, uh, Mr. Young, um, spoke about is not changing this particular vote, but there is the mechanism, um, for reconsideration of a vote um, within the same session of the meeting, um, by someone on a prevailing side, um, if they wish to. And I'm just making certain that, um, I mean, the effect. Okay, um, I'm just. Okay, so yes, that, um, so it would be a motion that brings the question again before the assembly. And it would just require a motion, a second, and then the majority can, can be debated in the, of the vote.
Do you hear that, Ms. Burke?
Yes.
All right, but what I'm, for this, I would need to ask for reconsideration of the vote. Because I can do that for the thing or the failure of the side. Does that mean that we would do vote, or that, or, I can hear that part after that?
You would move to reconsider.
Okay, all right, I understand, thank you, but I apologize for that. Thank you, I be hearing very well. May I do that this time after?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that we reconsider the vote that was just done. Do I need to elaborate?
Yes, please.
You do not hear appropriately or understand well, and I listened to the words along the way. But you got it?
Ms. Burke? Hold on, Ms. Burke.
Girl, you're on. Okay, all that should be in my, okay, all that should be in my, uh, motion, I understand well. I just want to make sure that understood that I stated from the beginning that I was not in favor of other decisions. Oh, for me to vote in that manner, I did something along the way. So my motion back here is that, Ms. Burke?
Ms. Burke, can you please?
Hold on for just a second.
Uh, board members, I wanted to be sure because there was a, there is a mechanism to reconsider and then there is a mechanism to rescind. Something or meant something previously adopted. And, um, it is the rescension action that you have to be on the prevailing side during the same meeting. So you would have to rescind a previous vote, or move to rescind a previous vote. Um, and then, um, whatever motions, um, follow after that can follow up. Process wise, if the, if the, if Ms. Burke is wanting to, um, rescind the matter that was previously adopted, which was to add the extra meeting, that would be the action, Ms. Burke, rather than reconsideration, I apologize for that. The vote would be moving to rescind the previously adopted, um, motion, or vote rather, with respect to the budget.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
So are you clear?
Yes.
Are you clear on the language?
I am moving to reconsider the vote.
So for clarity, Ms. Burke, would you like to add that you are, say that you are going to rescind the vote that was pre, the, the previously adopted vote that was taken to add an additional budget work session? Ms. Burke? Ms. Burke?
No.
I can definitely add to what we're discussing, my name. Yes. Ms. Burke? Ms. Burke? Does she call again? Ms. Burke?
So for clarity on your motion, it is to rescind the previously adopted vote that was taken to add an additional budget work session?
Board members can be referring from the side of our conversations so that we can hear Ms. Burke clearly.
Ms. Burke, did you hear me? We haven't, I just wanted to make sure that's what you were saying, so we just need a second. Wait a minute, wait a minute, Ms. Burke.
Ms. Burke, do you want to repeat back what you heard while they're researching it just to make sure that, um, you heard it correctly?
Would you please? So the motion is to rescind previously adopted?
Vote that was taken to add an additional budget work session?
So.
Second.
So it's been moved by Ms. Burke and seconded by Ms. Dole to rescind previously adopted vote that was taken to add additional budget work session? Any discussion?
Any discussion?
I just want to be really clear here. Because not by just twirling. So at this point, I'm sorry, at this point, a yes vote says that we are not going to have the extension, the extra meeting.
Yes.
Okay, that's what the yes vote means. Thank you.
Ms. Cosby, the votes were won, allow them on the rescinding. Yes. And it needs a two-thirds vote to pass.
So call the question. Ms. Dorff?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Cosby?
No.
Ms. Burke?
Yeah.
Ms. Burke? No, you're okay. You're okay. Ms. Owen?
Yes. Now, Ms. Pien?
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Page.
So there will be an additional budget work session and you need to sort that today.
So because of the notice, the problem is. The 25th. And it has to be. Yeah, I will submit the information to the mayor's office. So the 25th?
Uh, Ms. Owen voted yes, Mr. Barlow voted no, Ms. Gibson voted no, Mr. Young voted yes, Ms. Cosby voted no, Ms. Burke voted yes, Ms. Owen voted yes, Ms. Pien voted no, and Ms. Page voted yes. You need to sit.
6:00 PM, Monday. What, what? No, you're there? Yes. So only I or the double D on? That's it, look. It's 2019, 2020, estimate of names. When 19, 2020. Say up. Ms. Young?
Because we haven't had enough fun yet. One person will laugh, kind of, Madam Chair. I would like for us, the board, to revisit our conversation and our conversation. And I'm going to go pertinent to transparency provided for disclosure of those personnel cuts, the 49 positions. And I think that we can initiate that conversation this evening and continue it between now and, on Monday, on the 25th, when we convene again. But I would propose, I'm not going to need a form for me to disclose. I would propose that we initiate a conversation this evening pertinent to the personnel cuts. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. My much smarter colleague, Amy, reminded me that I would include in my motion that we initiate the conversation, but that we also disclose publicly those 49 positions.
So, Ms. Young, so what is, what is your motion? And Ms. Leather? I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, I understand what Mr. Young's motion, I think, is going to be based on his commentary earlier. Your board policy, your, excuse me, your board bylaws at 1-1.5 provides that on, at number three, that the school board recognizes that discussion of personnel matters is to remain confidential and to be discussed through appropriate channel processes. And that it is the obligation of each school board member and the entire school board to protect, excuse me, the privacy of the individual. School board members should offer criticism of school board employees only private meetings with the appropriate individuals or executive session. And so what Mr., the motion that Mr. Young intends to make with respect to, I guess, transparent or disclosing the specific names of individuals, individual employees is in conflict with the policy, with your bylaws. And with the, with the, with that, in order to suspend your bylaws, you would need a two-thirds majority of your board to suspend that particular bylaw. And the effect of that, which would, if what Mr. Young seeks to do passes, runs that contravent, contravent rule back. So I'll be clear on what Ms. Leather has stated. Ms. Young?
Yes, ma'am, thank, uh, you, Ms. Leather. So I'm just going to read what I wrote in Mr. Young's motion. Initiate discussion this evening pertinent to personnel cuts, including the 49 positions, and disclose publicly said 49 positions this evening.
So, yeah, Ms. Young, so just to restate what Ms. Leather said, so no main motion is in order in conflict with the bylaws unless we suspend the rules. So your motion is in conflict with our bylaws. So therefore, we have to suspend the rules.
So.
Ms. Gibson?
I think that that is, I disagree with the interpretation of our bylaws. These are, so someone's personnel records are going to have to do with their performance. These, this is not a discussion that has any relationship to performance. And so, so I personally do not see this as a, as a component of bylaws. That said, I am happy to go ahead and motion if that will keep this thing moving along. But to me, that is not necessary. And as I've read before.
So we have legal with us and you may disagree with the bylaws. The bylaws clear, the bylaws clearly state the school board recognizes that discussion of personnel matters is to remain confidential and must be discussed through the appropriate channel processes. And that is the obligation of each school board member and the entire school board to protect the privacy of the individual. School board members should offer criticism of school employees only in private meetings with the appropriate individuals or an executive session. So again, no main motion is in order in conflict with our, with our bylaws unless we suspend the rules. Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I am, if my colleagues are going to blotch, prepare to withdraw that motion and propose an alternative motion that perhaps would pass legal muster specifically. And I don't think this is semantics, but I would propose, in lieu of what I've just read, initiate discussion this evening pertinent to all cuts, including the 49 line item budget positions, and disclose publicly said 49 positions this evening. And I would, just editorialize that I would concur with.
Ms. Young, we have to suspend the rules.
No, I, I, I'm, so I, like my colleague from the third, respectfully disagree with our legal opinion.
Ms. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's pretty common settled that personal information, which is what comprises personnel records, is information that can reasonably be used to identify an individual. So limiting the definition of personnel information to mere performance issues, to me, is not, not an appropriate definition of what these records would be. We've had this discussion a couple of times now. And based on the idea of listing the individual positions, it's, it's pretty clear that many of the employees in many of those positions could be identifiable by their coworkers, by themselves, by their family, by other people who are involved in this. I understand the urge to be transparent, and I do think that this is a really difficult tension, to be, the tension between transparency and privacy rights of individuals who are working in our school system. But ultimately, I think in this case, we have to be very careful about protecting the privacy rights of our employees, which is why I was glad that the superintendent of the administration gave high-level overviews of the number of cuts that each department would, would potentially endure. So once again, to protect the privacy and the dignity of those employees who may have, who may lose their jobs as a result of the ultimate budget that we approve, and frankly, as a result of the likelihood that we aren't going to receive as much money from the city as I think we deserve, I respectfully disagree with the, the motion of the board yesterday.
So there's, no second to the motion made by Ms. Young. So there's the motion, there's. We need to suspend the rule. We need to suspend the rule. My motion is acceptable.
Um, do you second?
I sus, I motion to suspend the rules to allow us to be able to disclose the, the titles of the positions that are slated for elimination.
Ms. Gibson, do you think like?
And can you say that you're suspending the rules of the bylaws, section 1-1.5?
Can you hear Ms. Burke?
When you're ready, you can speak without.
Okay. Ms. Dorff?
So a yes vote here means that we are suspending the bylaws to consider releasing.
Yes.
The titles, excuse me.
No.
The motion is made by Ms. Gibson to suspend bylaws, section 1-1.5, allow board to release the title of positions proposed to be eliminated. Is there a second?
There's a second, Ms. Cosby. So the motion is made by Ms. Gibson, there's a second, it's I, Ms. Cosby.
Ms. Burke, do you hear that and understand that motion?
Yeah, I do hear it.
Any discussion? Ms. Gibson? I'm just going to read once again the vote from Megan Ryan, Executive Director of the Virginia Coalition for Open Government. This was published in the Missional Dispatch, in an article regarding panels of principle, who was let go, and there was some public concern about the level of transparency. The article states, "State public records law allows local officials to decide whether to release information that could be deemed a personnel record." Quote, "Generally speaking, the personnel exemption is discretionary. They can release records or have discussions publicly if they choose," said by the Ryan Executive Director of the Virginia Coalition for Open Government. "It doesn't have to be all or nothing. I think sometimes governments think they can't say anything. There are things you can say that inform the public without divulging sensitive or private information," end quote.
Ms. Young?
I just wanted to add that I believe it was the same individual who was quoted in Mr. Matty Lee's article last week indicating that the approach this board has taken was, in fact, appropriate. I'd refer to Mr. Matty Lee if he would like to share that.
Ms. Dorff?
Yeah, I, I'm, as I've said before, but just to say again, this, this notion is really disappointing to me. I think that the, we're getting into serious privacy issues, never mind the dignity of our staff, that we have not yet voted on the budget. And it is an unusual situation because we have not yet voted on the budget. So we don't exactly know what will happen as it relates to these positions. And our employees deserve the right to decide then and how they disclose their own information. It is not for us, I believe, as their employers, to make that decision for them and have them find out about it in the paper the next day. As we've also said, this is about the position, not the person. And there are many vacant positions within the RPS organization. And I think it is incumbent on us to manage this process in a way that makes our employees feel, feel good about it and identify ways to slot them into other positions where we really need people, both within the RPS organization and also within the city. And I believe we've been having some of those discussions with the city as well.
I just want to say, I think we're being very insensitive to our employees. Privacy matters. I share the same sentiment as my colleague, Ms. Dorff. As we, as I stated before, our bill of work will begin when we receive the final numbers from the city. So those proposed positions may not even be on the list. But I feel very uncomfortable disclosing personnel matters. We have to protect the integrity of this process and protect the privacy of our employees. And if we can't. And if we can't abide by those rules, we have a serious problem. Ms. Cosby?
I feel like I'm looking at how I get in the twilight zone right now, because I will just be very candid with you all. I remember when I was Director of Public Information, and I think it was during your tenure on board, and so. Ms. Page, I can't remember, but draft cuts had to be made, and my position was up to be cut. It wasn't like the, my position was up to be cut. It was the, 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 director of public information. I just remember it. I remember that because it affected me, of course. Now, did it happen? No. I'm sorry, what did you tell me? Did it happen? No, but that was, it was a consideration during that budget discussion. I'm, so I'm a little, a little lost. Anyway, just wanted to share that. And I think this is coming up, Ms. Dor, because we're talking about treating employees with respect, and I think this is coming up because employees feel as if we're not treating them with respect by not being, having candid conversations about what is being considered possible. And I think these perhaps might not have framed it, well, I'll leave it to them.
Calling question?
The motion was made by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Cosby, to suspend bylaws, section one dash one point five, to allow the board to release the titles of positions proposed to be eliminated. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Supiny?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
No.
Ms. Dor?
No.
Motion fails. Next item. The next item is your legislative updates, five point one, receive the legislative updates.
Good evening, Chairman Page, members of the board, Superintendent Cameris. We are now in the final week of the 2019 legislative session, and the legislature is poised to return on time this Saturday. Today was the deadline for the budget conference release to negotiate a final state budget. Their report will be made available no later than Thursday, and the House and Senate will go to approve it on Friday or Saturday. Now, we have continued to advocate for the best public education funding package possible, specifically encouraging legislators to prioritize the act risk add-on program, among other funding priorities. On February fourteenth, we coordinated a drop-in advocacy day with the city leadership to express our funding priorities with budget conferences. The participation of Mayor Stoney, Superintendent Cameris, board members, as well as council members showed a united effort on the importance of an act risk add-on program for our city. Now, we also held a press conference with members of the Richmond Legislative Delegation, including Delegate Oren, Delegate Carr, Delegate McQuint, and Senator Dance. We are so appreciative of the advocacy and leadership from our delegation on this issue. After the budget report is released by the Budget Conference Committee, we will provide you with a written report that details the final budget package and distribution that RPS can expect to receive once the final budget is signed into the law by the government. Additionally, we will detail all legislation that has been passed in a final report for you next week. Now, although session is wrapping up, our advocacy efforts are going to be ongoing throughout the rest of the year because we need to keep pressure on the General Assembly leading into 2020 session. It is an election year, and we intend to keep public education funding on voters' minds. To do this, we will continue with our advocacy trainings, in-person and virtual, for both families and our students. We want families telling our, their advocacy stories, both at the dinner table and in the community. We also have powerful student voices. We heard one of them today with Iced Two, and we will identify a variety of opportunities to help them share their message. Advocacy does not stop when the General Assembly leaves, and we intend to take every opportunity to amplify the call for funding for our schools. Now, I'll turn it over to Matthew Stanley, our Director of Advocacy and Outreach, to provide updates on other engagement activities from session and important legislation that we have been involved in.
Thank you, Dr. Cameris. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Cameris, members of the board. Be brief with you tonight. The efforts that we've undertaken this year have been greatly noticed, especially last week. We demonstrated a powerful symbol of community working with the city to go visit budget conferences. That Valentine's Day advocacy pop and press conference was just one of the many engagement activities that we did this year, and I did want to tell you a few of the other highlights from the session. As you remember, we did start strong in December with the March for War, with over a thousand people building momentum leading into the session, and we really enjoyed being able to highlight our student voices during that event. That's a key priority for our scheme, and we will continue that in the months ahead. Then in December, you approved a legislative agenda for our General Assembly delegation introduced over $600 million in state budget, and that's based on that agenda, helping bring awareness and give notice to other members of the Assembly about the critical funding needs that our districts has identified, as well as many other districts in the state. That's generated continued press and attention throughout session, and we've had many comments from colleagues from other school divisions thanking us for our advocacy efforts. We've also developed an advocacy toolkit. It helps empower our community students, staff, parents to know how to make their voices heard across us. And then in January, we conducted four advocacy trainings using the toolkit. We did one with our Parent Advocacy Council, and we did three others that were open to the community, one in the East End, one in Fulton, and one in South Side. We also had our Parent Advisory Council form an advocacy focus group. They've been tasked with helping us strategize from the best ideas from their direction as far as how we can continue to engage parents and families in advocating with the state. Just last week, we did start planning more advocacy activities throughout the spring to build momentum. With your partnership, we hosted a legislative breakfast, open house back in January. It was a great opportunity for you all to meet some of the legislators and staffers that you work with on a daily basis and raise awareness of the great things happening at RPS. And then Superintendent Cameris also came down to the General Assembly several times this year and helped testify before the House Appropriations Committee on several different funding issues, and I've also testified in part with several other General Assembly subcommittees and committees on behalf of legislation introduced by our delegation members, and I know they have been very grateful for our support. In late January, we also had the Red for Ed March, over 4,000 people, one of the largest rallies at the Capitol in decades, had good momentum from that with the teacher salary raise, agreement over that. And then, as Dr. Cameris noted, we did have the Valentine's Day pop-up last week. We visited with the mayor, the school board member Burke, City Councilman Kilber, and Superintendent Cameris. We visited over seven budget conferences and several staffers in just over an hour, which I think is some kind of record. And then, just today, we continued our student advocacy down at the Capitol. We had two student groups from Armstrong High School visiting. We were able to get them to meet some legislators, talk a bit about advocacy, what their priorities are, and keep hearing about the schools and facilities. And then they were able to watch some of the House and Senate floor sessions from the galleries and be introduced by Delegate Oren and Senator Allen. So, really positive session for us, and while this level of engagement with state advocacy is really significant, it was just a start. We will have a long way to go. We all know that even if the General Assembly maxes out within the House and Senate budget proposals, that still doesn't put us much farther ahead than where we started. So, we will continue to work with the Assembly over the next year, going into the 2020 session, and be setting us up for success in that. And now, there are several pieces of legislation that have been advancing through the legislative process. I know that our focus has been on state budget, but I do just want to give you a heads-up on a few things that will be coming down the pipe, and we do expect the governor to approve. You know, the school safety was a major topic this year during session, and a couple of the bills that I would highlight, one is the moving forward, school modernization and school security improvement projects the district undertakes must be reviewed for compliance with state building and fire codes. And then any new school construction plans moving forward are going to have to be reviewed by a crime prevention specialist to ensure our schools are designed with emergency situations in mind. We also know of school resource officers, that's been a big discussion point this year. The, the school board is going to be required to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the local police department to enumerate, establish the powers and duties of those school resource officers in our schools. And then school counselors are going to be required to spend at least eighty percent of their time in direct student services instead of on administrative tasks, and we expect that new policy to also be paired with a reduction in the school student to school counselor ratio. That will be determined in the state budget, if it comes out later this week. And then, one other, I think, very interesting commission, something new, the General Assembly doesn't create new commissions every year, but they are poised to create a commission on student behavioral health, which will help the state provide some ongoing study over student behavioral health policies and practices, including enhanced mental health support services, disciplinary policies, and other teacher trainings. And then there are also, we're going to be, several other budget items that are in negotiation right now that will allow the Virginia Center for School Safety to provide additional resources and trainings to our schools and teachers. Couple of things related very quickly to teachers. Virginia Education Association was working on a few bills this year. One that I would like to highlight is one that they are, it's aligned with our strategic plan. It's called the Diversifying Teacher Workforce Act, aimed at increasing the number of teachers of color in our schools. And it does that by eliminating the requirement that all individuals seeking entry into traditional teacher preparation programs must pass the professional assessments known as the Praxis. The Praxis has shown significant pass rate gaps between white teacher candidates and minority teacher candidates, and what the bill would do is it would grant authority to the Board of Education to develop an alternative, its alternative evaluation to allow teacher candidates to demonstrate proficiency in other ways. It also allows for local superintendents to request waivers from the State Board of Education for the, from the professional assessment requirement for provisionally licensed teachers, if those provisionally licensed teachers have been receiving sufficient ratings on their performance standards for each year of their provisional licensure. And then, another bill related to Board of Education is that they've asked for a way to discipline teachers that doesn't involve suspension or revocation of the teacher license. And so, the DEA put in legislation that would allow the Board of Education to issue a private grid recommendation, and it does look like that legislation is going to be enacted into law. And then, some of the final topics I'll cover are some other things that we've been following very closely. One of them that we've learned as we do too is that the school calendar bill, Kings Dominion Bill, has finally passed, and it looks like the school districts will now be able to open school before Labor Day, up to two weeks before Labor Day, as long as we also give the Friday before Labor Day as a school holiday. And then, the school modernization bills that we were following this year, it doesn't go out there, there's going to be any major funding bills for school modernization projects. But the bill that I told you about before regarding net energy meeting, net energy metering, the ability of schools to install electricity generating projects like solar panels through public-private partnerships, and then be able to sell that energy back to the grid, that is something that not only the General Assembly is willing to allow us to do, but they are actually highly encouraging schools across the state to start taking that approach. And then I think before I had mentioned a prior version of that bill that it would allow for schools to be financed with economic development authorities. That's been changed now to the Virginia Small Business Financing Authority to help out finance school construction projects. And then finally, there is one other legislative commission that it looks like they are set to establish, and that is a Commission on School Innovation, Modernization, and Competitiveness to develop and oversee the implementation of a goal and strategic plan for promoting and increasing public high school participation in dual enrollment courses, and to certify patient state licensure examinations, modernizing public elementary and secondary school loans throughout the Commonwealth, and achieving the Commonwealth's Teacher Compensation Goal. So, three very big buckets that that commission will be tasked with. And so, as all of these bills move on from final passage in the General Assembly to the governor, I will just remind you that the governor has three options for every bill that he receives. The law, that he may approve the laws as is, he may veto them, and if so, they're subject to a two-thirds override by each chamber of the General Assembly, and he may also request amendments to bills, and those will have to be approved by a simple amendment of each chair. And the legislature will convene on April third to take out any actions that he takes on bills, and we will provide you with a final legislative report after that date. In the coming days, we will have you a budget report after the Budget Conference Committee puts their own budget, on letting you know about how all the different education proposals vary, and then next week, we'll do the final outcome on board community development, detail all the pieces of legislation in even more detail than what people might. Thank you very kind, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you all. The board? The secretary? The, the secretary, please, please. Thank you. Next item? Madam Chair, item, here's the board decision, I have, I'm in the section, I'm in the, in section six, and then item, item six point zero nine, this is actually, I'm going to go by. Have you started? You spoke, I'm leaving, okay, okay. Thank you. Yeah, I did, I did. Really nice, really, I scale, I don't know this, and today, if you got a target update, I'm going to do a, continue the action with my team, and I'm going to stay here. And so first, if a target update, I'm happy to let you know that, that, and, and, I have seen the construct, through the GPA, and, 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 including, and, and, I, I have, and, and, so, 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 I, I, so, 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 So our requested actions are that you would rescind the current graduation requirements on record with the state for community high school, and approve the graduation requirement of advanced studies diploma for community high school for the incoming nineteen, twenty freshman class and beyond. Similarly, for Franklin Military, it is the expectation that students at Franklin Military take a military-related course each year, consistent with their theme. And so that has never been filed with the state, and because that's an additional graduation requirement, that has to be approved. Again, we do not believe the state will have any problems approving these, but we do have to have approval for you all, and then take that to the State Board, again, for the structural housekeeping. So the report action for Franklin Military would be to approve the requirement that all students take a military-related course each year at Franklin Military Academy for the incoming nineteen, twenty freshman class, again, consistent with current practice and expectations. Can you pause there and see if there are any questions about this?
Ms. Neal?
Thank you, Chair. At Franklin, when is, when, when's the, this may, may be a question we're not prepared to address this evening, but I'm curious, when the last time students, freshmen, were actually required or taking a military course, did you know that?
So students at Franklin do have, have been and are currently required to do so. That's what students and families understand at Franklin Military. The gap is that, that formal practice was not approved by, presumably this board approved it at some point, when it approved the school's charter, for lack of a better term, but it was not approved by the state. Anytime we require something above and beyond the state requirements for graduation, it has to go to the State Board of Education approval. So as far as we know, this has always been a practice at Franklin Military. This is not a new practice nor a new expectation. It just needs to be validated by the State Board then. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. Certainly my, thank you, just briefly, certainly my expectation. That's partly why they're, they're there, so thank you.
Ms. Owen?
I move that we suspend the rules regarding policy revision to allow consideration and approval of policy during this session. Ready?
Oh, so you do not need, not asking for policy. We're asking for motion, and I have it written here and on the board as well.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you have to, okay.
I thought I was reading.
Thank you, Linda, you were helpful. It's just the next slide.
I thought I was in the next slide.
Oh, I can keep going on another action item we prefer. There are no more questions about Franklin Community.
Yes, so Ms. Owen.
So, well, let me, let me quickly brief the board on this. The third action we are asking for tonight, in the ongoing quest to perfect Board Policy five dash six point three, I suspect this will not be the, sort of the first time you've seen it, it will not be the last. With every conversation, we, issues are identified, so I appreciate your patience with this policy in particular. And as I've said before, we do need to do a more comprehensive review with community stake, uh, stakeholder input on this policy. But for now, we are asking a small edit to have current and historical practice reflect policy, specifically in how we assign rank, class rank, when there are more than ones, when there's more than one student with the same exact GPA. The current policy is listed as if two students have the exact same rank, they would be rank one, and rank one, and then the next two students would be rank two and rank two. The practice that has been utilized as far back as we can tell is rank one, one, and then it goes to rank three and three, okay? Essentially, just giving over rank two because there are four students. So we're simply asking for a change in that to a flat practice.
So, all right, here's my question then. Do we need motions for all of this, or just one thing?
For each item. So if anyone is interested in making set motions, I do have the first three written out for you. The fourth one would be to amend Board Policy five dash six point three as recommended.
It's gonna snow.
All right, so here I go. It's Dr. F's motion. Okay. First, I would move that we approve the requirement that all students take a military-related course each year at Franklin Military Academy for the incoming two thousand and nineteen, twenty freshman and beyond.
Second.
This is moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Gibson.
Again, the motion is made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Gibson, to approve the requirement that all students take a military-related course each year at Franklin Military Academy for the incoming two thousand and nineteen, twenty freshman and beyond.
Any discussion?
All the questions? Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Werke?
No.
Okay. Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sateen?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
I move that we rescind the current graduation requirement for community high school.
Need a second? Second. This is moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Gibson.
Again, the motion is made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Gibson, to rescind the current graduation requirements for community high school.
Any discussion? All the questions?
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sateen?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight, oh. I move that we approve the graduation requirements of an advanced studies diploma for community high school for the incoming two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty freshman and beyond.
Need a second?
Second.
This is moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Young.
To approve the graduation requirements of an advanced studies diploma for community high school for the incoming two thousand and nineteen, twenty freshman and beyond.
Any discussion? All the questions?
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sateen?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight, oh. I have some more. I move that we suspend the rules regarding policy revision to allow consideration and approval of a policy during this session.
This is moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Gibson.
To suspend the rules regarding policy revision to allow consideration and approval of a policy during this session.
Any discussion? All the questions?
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sateen?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight, oh. You have the last one? I move that we approve RPS Board Policy five dash six point three as amended.
Need a second?
Second.
This is moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Gibson.
To approve RPS Board Policy five dash six point three as amended.
Any discussion?
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sateen?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight, oh. Ms. Riley? The next item is seven four oh two, receive an update, action related to. And so, the next item is to receive for action, personnel actions.
Good morning, school board. The recommended town office actions for school board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, every nineteen, twenty nineteen include nomination of five employees, change of contract of nine employees, the resignation of ten employees, the furlough of twelve employees, the returning from leave of five employees, the retirement of one employee, and the termination of two
Need a motion? Need a motion?
I move that we approve the actions presented by the town office, related to personnel
Need a second?
Second.
This is moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Gibson, to approve the HR actions as Any discussion? All the questions?
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sateen?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight, oh. The next items are an eight budgetary item to receive a board financial statement for Patrick in this school, science, and arts. Those documents will post to board, I'll have to review.
The Financial Security Board, I'm the chair of Patrick Henry, and I'm just going to give you a brief update. Our quota is two hundred and twenty-one thousand approximately. Our liabilities are five thousand dollars. Our restricted funds are a hundred and fifty-six, fifty-seven thousand dollars approximately. And we have such a sufficient level of cash to cover liabilities and restricted funds. You have any further questions? All right, thank you.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry. I don't have a question, but I think this is the first time this board has been before us. I just wanted to convey my congrats on your position, relatively new position as chair of the terrific school.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for your support.
I do have another question. What would RPS review to quarterly financially?
Um, what's the question?
What would RPS review to?
Quarterly financial?
Is this there? Well, this is one to our accounting, I mean, the board, um, review those.
In RPS, though, so what we do is we send it to Simmons and Ms. Lewis, and she posted through that to be reviewed on that, so I'm, I don't understand the question. We check this one from administration.
Department of Administration.
Who's your, I don't know what the desk has in mind. Quarterly financial statements are sent to, and I refer them to Mr. Simmons and Ms. Greg in the Budget Department to know if they have any questions, they will reach back out to Patrick Henry if they're ready.
And one more question. Your annual budget, what is, what does that normally mean to send it?
We usually get that to, um, to the budget department around spring.
Okay, the same time?
What we do as part of the budget process is, we do actually, um, moderate process and evaluate how many students are actually going to have. We let the budget department know where our expectations are needed. We go through the actual, our own process, bring budget out of our board, who is it, who is it, um, to, uh, RPS. And so should do it on the same time.
All right. Thank you.
If you have a question, go for the ask, I'll sit.
All right, the next item is new business. Do you have any, any, uh, I don't have any. So, do you have any announcements? Oh, Ms. Owen, I was on.
Uh, and I, I have already notified the members of the board that I'm working on the score committee. And if you have any suggestions or concerns about the score, please let me know. And our next meeting is next Tuesday, not tomorrow, I mean, not today, obviously not today, but next Tuesday, so the day after our next meeting. But please let me have them, if possible, by this Friday, so, thank you.
So you requesting anything back on the, on the whole thing? Anything in there that you're concerned about? The Friday's date of twenty second, and information feedback to you or the court? Do you, are five key on the business there or?
Yes, we do.
I just wanted to note again that we are currently on a two-hour delay for tomorrow morning, and we will reassess early in the morning, depending upon the amount and type of precipitation as to whether we will hold a two-hour delay or go to a closure. For the record, I C T told me, from her perspective, she very much likes a closure.
They don't have items to discuss at this time. It's for us.
I just want to, so we're going to have another budget work session in twenty minutes. At this time, do you talk about what is, that we would like to discuss, process, what have you, or do you just send information to you? Any information?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you have questions?
If we could get any questions or process notes, say by the end of the day on, what's today?
Tuesday.
Um, let's say by the end of the day, Thursday, that would be helpful, so we can then do the appropriate preparation.
If there's no other business, we are now adjourned.